Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on Monday, March 1st, 2021 at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call this meeting to order. I'll invite Pastor Justin Baldwin to come up from the harbor. Thanks Pastor for being here. Remain standing after the invocation and we'll say the pledges.
Good evening, everyone. Does it matter which mic? Let's pray together. Father in heaven, you are God. Lord, we owe our lives to you. You've made us and whether we are aware of it this moment or not, we're dependent on you. So thank you for the life you've given us today. Lord, thank you for particularly this council that you've brought together. Your word tells us, Lord, actually it says you urge us that we pray for those who are leading us because you want us to be able to have peaceful, peaceful lives, God. So thank you for that. Lord, we ask that you be active among this group tonight, that you guide each decision that is made so that it would be a blessing to everyone who lives in Friendswood or works here or even visits here, Lord. Father, we acknowledge that you are the true King. And we just, we thank you for this day. We pray all of this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Justin. Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one, indivisible. Thanks. Thanks a lot, Justin. Thank you for being here, sir. All right. Mine works just fine. Item four, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. A few cards here. Brady Mora. Oh, there you are.
Brady, I think you know the drill. You get a yellow card after two minutes and a red card after three.
Sure do. Thank you. Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. And before I go too far, congratulations, our city secretary, Melinda, on a job well done. I'm here to talk about trees. On the way up here, I was trying to figure out how many mature, beautiful live oaks we have. I think there's probably about 60, which isn't close to League City. They've probably got three times that many. Pearland's got a lot of them and Alvin has some beautiful live oaks. I was in Brazoria County yesterday and they have some trees that ours just barely compare to. Anyway, they're all precious. So one of them's dying in front of the Friends Church. I guess y'all know that, but this man has entered into a dialogue that owns five of these trees. So that's a big, big plus. When we started this, I don't think there was any dialogue, but now there is. So that's a big step. The parsonage sitting there is covering 2,300 square feet. And the project this man has in mind, I just have to say, the trees have zero chance of surviving. And that's just my opinion. If he were to stay to the footprint, or he could even enlarge the footprint twice, you know, say 5,000 square feet, those trees would have a good chance of surviving. But the trees have two strikes against them. The construction is going to disturb them to no end. But the lack of maintenance and mitigation that has to follow up on a project like this is long lasting. I'm talking 20 years before they're in the safe zone. They'll take five years just to die. And it'll be a slow, painful, agonizing death to watch for someone like me. But anyway, how much is it worth? I don't know. I'm not sitting where you are, so I don't have to make those decisions. I think the city of Friendswood spends about $30 million a year. And we've got the park benches and the sidewalks and the services, you know. This is an affluent community. There's people here with deep pockets. But these trees have value beyond... You can't buy them, you know. And I think this man's starting to understand that we feel they're important. So this ain't over, you know. There's a chance where there's a glimmer of hope. There's still a way. I may not know the way. Maybe y'all do. I hope so. Thank you.
Thanks, Brady. Robin Hall. Give me no clue about what you're going to talk about. Says general comments. Oh, you got a whole host of people.
So I have here with me Derek Brown and Judy Wiggins. My name is Robin Hall and I was the president of the Rotary Club last year from July 1st to June 30th. And at the end of my tenure, COVID began. When COVID began, the cities went on lockdown. There was a lot of things that were affected and a lot of us felt that we had no control. Being part of the Rotary Club, there were several of us that wanted to do something to help our community. As part of the Friendswood Rotary Foundation, we are not equipped to give money to businesses, but we are able to help those individuals in need. At the time, there was a need for us to do both and we needed to figure out a way to make that happen. Our local restaurants needed business and they were not allowed to have dine-in, but they were allowed to serve takeout. We also saw a need for those that lost their jobs suddenly due to the government shutdowns and could use a hot meal. Dave Smith and myself called and talked to our city manager, Marod Kabiri, to see what we might be able to do. And at the same time, the Friendswood Youth Baseball also reached out to them. So quickly, we got together with a meeting with Marod, Stephen, David Smith, myself, Justin Estefanol, Alyssa Jaden from the Friendswood Youth Baseball. The three organizations made a plan to help provide meals to those in need. Quickly, we were able to get together and purchase meals from the local restaurants and we passed out three times a week to those in need. We were able to hand out over 6,100 meals and spend $60,000 in our local restaurants. So my purpose here today is to share an award that was presented to the Friendswood Rotary Club by the Friendswood Chamber for the meal effort. The ability to give out 6,100 meals and pay the restaurants for the meals provided, which we're told by the restaurants helped them to keep them afloat during those times. Our Rotarians took applications, vetted applications, made referrals, or extra needs that could not be served and were passed on to others. I want to thank a few of the Rotarians, David Smith, Chris Turner, Jerry Stacy, Judy Wiggins, Scott Dayton, Craig Hall, Justin Estefanol, and myself. The Friendswood Youth Volunteers that showed up every day to pass out meals were Alyssa Jaden, Justin Estefanol, and Jill Carver. They also were a number of other baseball parents that came to pick up meals that needed to be delivered. Alyssa organized those parents and made sure that everyone that needed a meal that was not able to come up to the park for pickup had someone that would deliver those meals to them. Michael Boyett from the Parks and Rec Department helped us facilitate drivers that we needed to get the meals to the senior citizens that usually had a meal at the senior facility. But since it was closed, that was not an option for them. Michael put us in touch with Jeannie and Shawday that drove the city bus to each of the seniors' residents to make sure that they had a good hot meal. These two ladies were great during this process. There was even one pickup time that the ladies were shorted a meal, by accident, of course. And instead of coming all the way back to the park to get another meal, they went through one of the open drive-throughs and paid for the meal out of their own pocket to ensure that nobody that needed a meal was going to go without. So again, my purpose here today is to share the award with the city of Friendswood and the Friendswood Youth Baseball because we could have not have done this without the partnership that these three organizations formed together. I would also like to put in for the five-star award for Jeannie and for Shawday. And I have the applications here. It says to drop them in the box in the outside, but I think with the renovations, there's no box.
Drop them with Marad. Thank you, Robin. That's great. Thanks, Judy. Last card, Don Johnson. Those of you on council that don't remember, we just put our vote in, city of Friendswood, for Don to return to the subsidence district board. And so after two years of him not being on subsidence, you're back on. So with that, that's how I'll introduce you.
And I wanted to stop by this afternoon and thank the mayor and council members for supporting my appointment to the subsidence district. It's something near and dear to my heart. It's closely related to flood control. If you know anything about subsidence, it's kind of an organization that a lot of people don't really know a lot about. It controls... The land sinks when there's too much pumping of fluids from high surface areas. That was noticed. The legislature created it back in 1975. And there was a problem in Baytown over by the Goose Creek Oil Field where oil was close to the surface and between the water pumping and the oil pumping, the estimate was that the ground had been subsiding about one inch a year all the way back to 1925. You know, if you do the math, in some areas, that was about a four-foot subsidence. And it got so bad over in Baytown, they had to create sirens where when the tide was unusually high, the sirens would go off to notify some residents, hey, time to get in your car and leave because the water's coming in. And that's where the legislature took action and created the subsidence district. And it was across the fairly wide area of Harris and Galveston Counties. And since they wanted everybody to have representation there as much as they could, they created a 19-member board. If you can imagine, being on a board with 19 other members, it's a trick to get anything done there. But the general manager has done a pretty good job, particularly in Galveston County. We seem to have subsidence under control. And so I'm going to make sure that we keep subsidence under control and we do it in a cost-effective manner. We don't have international trips to the Netherlands or Japan or these other places where while I was gone for that two-year period, they approved a trip to the Netherlands, which I want to make sure we don't have any more of those happen. But anyway, I do want to thank you and tell you that I really appreciate it and I will do the very best job I can. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call anytime you want and I will be glad to try and answer your questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. And I know you will after you get your feet on the ground again. Come back, tell us what's going on at subsidence district. All right. Item five, work session, capital improvement projects update. Our city engineer, Hilardo Arias.
Hey, good evening, mayor and councilmen. I'd like to give you a brief update on the city's ongoing capital improvement projects, as always. While I'm giving this presentation, please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. So I wanted to start off by letting you know that we're starting to get near the completion of the reconstruction of list station number 23. This facility, which is located on South Friendswood Drive, adjacent to the Century Oaks subdivision, has been operating on a bypass pump for the past couple of months. In this picture, you see the new standby generator covered by the black tarp. As the winter weather two weeks ago demonstrated, you can never go wrong by having a generator at some of your most critical infrastructure and critical facilities like this. The control building will be installed soon and along with that comes the majority of the electrical work to be done. We think that this project should be wrapped up by the time, next time we have a CIP update. And despite that, we're getting ahead of that completion by getting our staff trained on the equipment that's going to be used at this site. Case in point, last month, we had a meeting with the vendor for the scrubber odor control system and got the city staff up to speed on that new system that they'll be using on that facility. So this morning, the city and Friendswood Volunteer Fire Department staff sat down for a kickoff meeting with PGA L, our architect, and the newly selected construction manager at risk for the fire station number two project, who is Christensen Building Group. Programming is complete on this $4.1 million project and that will be presented to the city council at next month's meeting. So one of the things that happened this morning was we gave the results of the programming to the CMAR and they'll be working on what they've been given to help verify, if you will, that we're on the right track cost-wise and start to work to nail down the final cost on anything that may be variable. Yes, ma'am.
Is that picture representative of that facade that they're planning?
It's not the final picture. There was some talk this morning that maybe there could be some slight changes. There is some concern from the Volunteer Fire Department on the long-term maintenance issues. At the end of the day, one of the things that we've discussed is, you know, some of these buildings, if they get leaks, it's not necessarily a product of the fact that you have two different levels roof or something. It could be a product of workmanship. That's a concern that they have. We're working through that right now, but for the most part, this is pretty representative of what you might be expected to see with some exceptions to maybe what the finishing to the exterior is going to be and what that roofline is going to look like. But for the most part, it'll have the three apparatus bay that you see there and some auxiliary rooms over to the right. And that's if there's some other things at work in the background. There may be some shifting of the building and if that happens, we may flip-flop, just mirror the building. But that's all stuff that we're working on right now. But as a whole, this is what their starting point right now.
Is the concern with regard to the facade matching the other facilities? Yes, ma'am.
And I will say that that is a point of discussion that we had this morning with the facade. And we, the architect will be looking at some of our other facilities and they'll start working their way from the south. They'll start by looking at what we've got going on at the animal control building and then what we've got going on at some of the other fire stations here in town. So.
Show them one of our fire trucks too because they're red.
That's what I keep bringing up. I keep telling Chief Cause that he's getting a white truck out of this. So I didn't want to share. One of the biggest challenges that they have right now, the CMAR, is with nailing down the cost is the variable cost of steel right now. They did inform us this morning that that's something that they see increasing every two weeks. They're hoping that it'll stabilize. They've had some other materials, like for example PVC that has stabilized in cost here recently. Steel's a real wild card. And upon learning of that, we made mention to the sense of urgency that we have because if you're seeing that cost increase every two weeks, that's two weeks every, two weeks that we wait, that's two weeks of increased prices. So we're really going to push on them to get this guaranteed maximum price locked down and lock everybody into place on that cost. So.
So what is the material on the outside of that white period? What is that?
The material that there's, I don't remember what the white part is, but the material on the bottom half is brick. Yeah. And it's just a, just a general look. That's not necessarily the final color on what the final version is going to be. And like I mentioned, the exterior, the discussion's ongoing on that. There's a possibility we could take that bottom material all the way up or it could be substituted with something like a concrete masonry unit block. That's all discussion that's going to be ongoing as we're going through the process with the construction manager at risk.
So we have other two fire stations that were recently constructed, Fire Station Four and the Fire Station One at the 1610 Whittaker. Both of them have accent exterior facility, material that's consisting of EPHIS. So their primary material is brick and the secondary material is EPHIS. And that's what this picture depicts. Obviously, that can change as we move on during this effort. Yes.
So next month, along with the results of the programming, we will be presenting a contract to you for design work by PGA L and that'll be next month. And likewise, we met this morning with PGA L also and with Core Construction, the CMAR for the PSB expansion. One of the things that was mentioned at our council meeting last month was that we weren't as close on the estimated cost of the programming as we wanted to be. That is something that PGA L has been working on. And they've given to the city a revised layout based on some of the feedback that had been given to them by city staff, by the police department also. And so we're taking that and that's going to be the starting point for the CMAR to work on some costs. The first thing that they're going to do, and they told us that they can have it to us within the next two to three weeks, is to verify some of the costs that the estimator was giving to PGA L. So that'll be our starting point and we will be seeing the results of the programming for this project also at next month's meeting along with the design contract for PGA L. Yes. Let me go back to that right there.
Separate building?
It doesn't look like it's connected there, but it is in this view right here. There's a bit of a plaza area right here. So if you will, it kind of does that, the wall does that right there. And again, this is representative of what we have in the programming at this stage right now. It, we will, there's a possibility it could always change based on the feedback that we get. But this is by and large a layout that we kept getting back from the architect. So. But that, they will be presenting that in a rough layout or not a rough layout. It'll be the program layout. They'll be presenting that to you next month. And so it's been a busy time for architects working with the city of Friendswood. Wanted to mention that we received five RFQs last month for A&E Services for the shelter component of the Black Hawk Facility. We hope to have an architect selected and ready for approval at next month's council meeting, but that's going to be largely dependent on some outside factors that we can't control. Mainly, we need to get through the paperwork that Harris County has under their review right now for Section 3.
Just as, excuse me, Hill, just as a reminder to council, the shelter component of this project is being paid for through the Community Development Block grant funds administered through Harris County. Therefore, they have to review and approve everything associated with it. That's driving the timeline. Yes, sir.
And also they, in addition to that review that they're making right now, they are involved in the process of selecting an architect. And so we'll be getting some feedback from them as well here in the very near future. As for the rest of the building, we are working with a local designer and we're hoping to get a good layout of what the offices need to look like and the shop area. We, I don't know if, I haven't seen if Renee's back in the back right now, but we've been going back and forth and I quickly learned that if we're going to keep the peace, we're probably going to have to have an architect. So. But we'll have a designer on board and will give us a really good idea of what the flow needs to be and what it needs to look like. Construction on Friendswood Lakes Boulevard is over one-third complete. The weather two weeks ago slowed it down a little bit, but the work is kicking back up again. The contractors finished the installation of sanitary sewer main, but the installation of an eight-inch water line and the storm sewer is ongoing right now. Their first concrete pour occurred the 9th of February and they completed another pour last week. The target completion date on this is June 10th. And they want to let you know that we will be meeting with the county and their contractor later this week to get an update on where things stand right now, what they see as their completion date and see if what kind of effect that their schedule has seen with everything that's gone on in the past month. Next, I wanted to update you on a few projects being undertaken by the Texas Department of Transportation. The contract for the curb and ramp project that we've kept hearing about, the $3.5 million project, it's been let and awarded by Tech Thought. That happened last month. They haven't given the city a concrete start date because we haven't had a pre-construction meeting for this yet. But we're thinking that it's probably going to be within the next couple of months when they kick this off. I did want to mention that on tonight's agenda, consent agenda, there is a advanced funding agreement up for consideration between the city and Tech Thought. This agreement is to pay for the costs associated with adjusting city utilities because of this project. The majority of what you might expect to see is adjustments in the height of manholes and water valve to get in line with the grade of the sidewalks there. So franchise utilities and, well, franchise or not, the other utilities will be taken of their own. well, franchise or not, the other utilities will be taking of their own, taking care of their own adjustments as well. So in addition to that, Tech Thought recently informed the city that the design of traffic signals at the intersection of FM five eighteen and Leisure Lane has been completed. These plans were sent over to their fabricator in December. And they're anticipating that the signals will be fabricated and delivered by June of this year. The details on the construction schedule should be made available here in the coming couple of weeks or months. And they don't have that out for bid yet. But we're anticipating that as soon as they have that out for bid, they'll be filling us in with more details as far as what the timeline's gonna look like and when they'll be getting started on that.
We had said, Hill, at the outset, that we would contribute something to that project if Tech Thought would expedite it. And do we know yet if they're gonna ask us for a contribution or?
You know, we, we keep going back and forth on that. We, we've told them that if this will help to accelerate the the project, the city is interested in giving a contribution. And they haven't given us a definitive answer because they've it really depends on what they, I talked to them, one day they'll say, oh, we'll just put it on a change order for another project. And then we're sitting here thinking, all right, well. And then another day, I might talk to them again and then say, hey, we'll contribute to that and they'll say, okay, we'll get the the advanced funding agreement ready. And so they haven't given us a definitive answer one way or another. They still keep going back and forth on that, but.
At the rate they're operating, nothing's been expedited. So.
Didn't we talk about expediting this like two years ago? No, yeah, so, good job.
So today, we've been invoiced three-point-eight million dollars in last year's street maintenance program. In our last CIP update, we did discuss some of the warranty items and back quality work that were in need of being addressed. As I mentioned previously, the city will be hanging on to retainage until some of those things are addressed, and that's still the case. In addition to that, we are holding to, onto something extra to out of the work that has been billed to go towards any repair work that may need to be done if it, if it were to come to that to where we didn't get the repair work done. But we the contractor has been working with us and don't see that as, at, at least at this stage, as being an issue that we're gonna have to go down. One thing that we didn't have at our last discussion about this project was a plan moving forward. But we've got that now. One of the things I, we discussed last time was the longitudinal cracking along some of the edges of the roads and the, what we expect to see done for that is to see some crack sealing going on. And, you know, we crack sealing where, where it needs to be done, and if it's determined that crack sealing's not gonna cut it, then Angel Brothers, the contractor, will be patching that area as well.
When will we be bidding out the 2021 program?
The 2021 program, and I'll give you a little bit more details in, here in a couple of slides, but the 2021 program, we're currently working on that right now. The first thing that you will see coming out of that will be the, we're gonna split that up into asphalt streets and concrete streets and concrete streets will be the first contract that will be coming out of that.
Hill, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Is there any way we could take a look at the foundations before we pour the asphalt? I mean, if we've got situations where we've got foundational problems and then we have cracking.
And that is part of the hesitancy in pushing forward with the asphalt. Because we do have that, that's the, the method, methodology that we have is something that we've been married to. But we, with the, some of the issues that have come as a result, we, as a staff, have said, hey, we need to take a step back here and you know, understandably, it's gonna create, drive the cost of.
I agree with you, Hill, and I appreciate you putting that in in this, maybe the next slide or two, but I, I mean, if we've got foundational issues, let's not pour something good over something that's not gonna work.
Exactly. And, and so there, there's going to be, in addition to the, the data-driven approach with the IMS study, there'll also be data from looking at what the foundational issues are, and you'll see in the next slide that that has proven to be really the case on one of our streets. So and just to wrap up this, this slide right here, they didn't want to mention driveways on North Clear Creek have been re-sloped to address grade issues. That was a, a real big problem that had been there and the contractor worked with us to address those issues. We did have some residents that were complaining about their, the bottom of their car bottoming out and the more we looked at that, we, the more we realized, hey, we need to have a minimum standard here instead of just addressing those people that have come forward and said, hey, I've got an issue. We told the contractor to address every single driveway on North Clear Creek, which they did, and it seems to have helped the situation a little bit. So on, on the very bottom right there, I do have on there that a change order is coming in April to reconcile some differences we have between quantities on paper and what the actual work was completed. But if we do, if we don't have some resolution on the quality issues between now and then, if they haven't progressed as much as we would like, then that's likely something that will be pushed back a little further, and that's just money out of their pocket for, for now. So Councilman Griffin was mentioning the foundational issues. We'll jump into the subject of Chester Drive. Of all the streets that were repaired, this was probably the most disappointing as far as the, the quality of the work that was completed. So much so that we visited with the hires, higher-ups with Angel Brothers and in a nutshell, they were pretty embarrassed with what's the situation out there. They don't want their name tied to a, a street that had the, the issues that this one has. So they were determined to make this right. On this street, we had some core samples taken and unfortunately, what it did reveal was it wasn't 100% on the quality or the, the work of the contractor. It revealed that it's a mixture of that and what we've got going on under all the asphalt, all the base, and that's some shrinking and swelling at a more excessive rate than what was anticipated. And that, that kind of leads us to why we're looking, we're taking a step back and looking at what our process is gonna be like moving forward on the asphalt streets instead of having a, a single approach that is intended to address every, every single street will be. Like I mentioned, it, it'll drive the cost up a little bit, but we hope to not have these issues not.
Right, and that's on future work. So we're
That's on future work.
We're gonna be still repairing this one with the, with the base problem.
Yeah, there's a, some base work that was performed on this street, and you can see it right there in the picture, in the difference in the plaque there. Some base work was completed where it was determined that there were some base issues. And then we're looking at doing a silo also on top of that to in a way to seal off any of the cracks that we may not have seen. And on top of that, we will see a, a layer aggregate in addition to some emulsified asphalt. This is something that we had anticipated happening last week. But it went with anything else that we tried to do last week where we're ready for it, geared up for it, and then we hear, oh, the, the storm last week put us back. So this is a, a very specific type of emulsified asphalt that the city has asked for. And so it's not gonna be, it's, it's proving to be a little bit harder to come by. But we really feel like this is the type of emulsified asphalt that we need for a an application like this. Tech Thought uses it all the time. And, you know, it's something that Angel Brothers has done out of the, their own pocket to, to do this, and this is, this was their suggestion that they wanted to do to go above and beyond just repairing the, the base. Everybody involved agrees that something like that will help extend the maintenance period, interval of what we have here and will buy us some time on what, ultimately, what we need to do there. On Chester Drive, along with any streets that are found to be in similar condition with their subgrade or they will be they won't be just reclaimed like we, like it was done here originally. If we do a asphalt core in the future and we see a, a strong need for a complete rebuild, then that's what the approach is gonna need to be for that street so that we're not having a repeat of Chester Drive.
So did I just understand you that you said buy some more time and some things that'll be done differently in the future, but with this particular road, could it be that this road is just rebuilt? If this, you said it will extend that maintenance interval, but could it, could there be a possibility that this road will have to be scratched and rebuilt totally?
Yeah, we're looking at that possibility on the next go-around. And that, that can be true of, of many streets. But it's pretty obvious that this is a street that a reclamation or a silo it's just gonna be a Band-Aid for a couple of years. The ultimate solution really is gonna need to be a full-depth reconstruction of the street.
What is a reclamation maintenance period for a standard asphalt road? Do we try to make those last five years, seven years? What, what's the standard?
Yeah, the the life cycle that we've been told we shouldn't anticipate out of a reclamation is in the five to seven-year window, which is real similar to what you would expect to see out of a silo. Silo, you wanna go through every four years.
The silo coat will give us that, that time.
That's, that's our anticipation. That's what we expect to see out of that.
We're, we're hopeful, assuming the subgrades not, issues are not more widespread along the asphalt streets. That's why concrete streets, we're able to do a third of the similar amounts to asphalt. With the concrete streets, we're doing a full-depth reconstruction all the way to the subgrade with the asphalt. It's simply pulverizing what's there, smoothing it out, and then putting a new asphalt layer on it. So we will evaluate the foundational issues and address them accordingly.
Okay. So we'll continue pushing the contractor for last year's program and, but in the meantime, like I mentioned earlier, we, we are working on the 2021 project. As always, the streets that are selected are largely based off of what the city's IMS study said. But there are some other factors that can be included with that, and that includes the frequency of work orders and the effects of, on drainage, rideability, traffic volume, and just good old-fashioned common sense and experience. Like I mentioned, the 2021 project will be split up. Part of the reason is for the stuff that we need to address with the asphalt so that we can get that into the specifications. And another reason is by and large, we were pretty happy with what went on with the, the concrete streets this past year. We felt like we got a pretty good product out of the, the whole deal. And and so we've been working with the, the contractor and kind of find out they are on a purchasing core operative. And when we heard that, we were pretty excited because that means they've already been through the bidding process and that, that is a purchasing avenue going forward. And whenever you get a, a good contractor like that, you really wanna hang on to them. And I say that, the contract last year was with Angel Brothers, but when I'm referring to the contractor, I'm referring to their subcontractor, which we will have a contract ready for you guys next month. Right now, we're looking at a approximately $500,000 contract. That's just a starting point right now. And it could be, could go up from there. We don't really wanna go down from there, but we, if anything changes, it might go up from there. So that's all the slides I have for tonight's presentation. If you have any questions? Yes.
So educate me, please. So on these asphalt streets that have some base issues that we may find in the future, would it be cost prohibitive, or would you ever consider switching from an asphalt to a concrete?
We, we would consider, depending on the magnitude of the foundation issues, the subgrade issues of the roadway. The only concern would be the, how far we can stretch our annual street dollars. So we're on pace right now to collect roughly 1.6, 1.7 million from the street sales tax for streets plus the 500,000 that council set aside. If we were to convert the majority of the asphalt streets to concrete streets, we're only gonna be able to do a third or less the number of the streets total. So obviously, we're gonna have to weigh the objectives and propose a plan to council that still, still hits a lot of our, our goals throughout the community. With our street maintenance program, we wanted to make sure that it was equally dispersed throughout the community. We didn't focus in one, one particular area. So obviously, we'll have to weigh that.
I didn't know if curbs and gutters or, you know, if drainage was an issue, but also that third bullet on your slide before where, you know, I was talking about repair tickets, frequency of repair tickets, or rideability, traffic volume, that kind of thing weighed in on, on maybe this needs to be a concrete street rather than a asphalt or.
It will be, but we, at that point, we may have to talk to council about possible bond programs, because if all of these were converted.
How much more is it? How much more is it?
This is a continual cycle we're gonna be dealing with.
No, I meant like an asphalt street, same, same length, asphalt versus concrete.
Probably three, three to four times.
Yeah.
Yeah, concrete's really, really expensive. We did a study, the street maintenance study that we did. Now, 2021's gonna be mainly guided by the street maintenance study that we did. So the roads that we know that are needing to be repaired, the asphalt roads we know that need to be repaired, we're gonna repair those. And if they're asphalt, we're gonna pretty much stay with that fault.
Correct, and I will caveat, Hill mentioned. Correct, and I will caveat, he'll mention the IMS study. If you recall, the IMS program involved a van that had sonar equipment. They would rate the subgrade. Obviously, on Chester and a couple of these other streets, it didn't adequately identify some of those subgrade issues. So we may look to a new program and how we rate future streets. But we do still have the IMS information. And we'll visit with engineering on how best to evaluate. Because we cannot go and do core samples of every street before we do work on it. It would be too work intensive and time consuming to do that.
And that's a good point that he brings up. Typically, when you're doing core samples, you might look at one neighborhood and look at one street on that neighborhood. And you can make a, safely most of the times, you can make the assumption that that one street is going to be representative of what you can see and expect to find in the rest of the streets in that area.
Thanks, Hill. Appreciate it. Item six, closed executive session. Communications from the public regarding executive session topics. Linda, did you get any cards for the executive session? Okay, council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect with possible discussion and action related there to an open session. We'll go back to our executive conference room, and we'll come back out as soon as we're done with this topic. All right, we are reconvened into open session. Item eight, communication from the public to comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Furthermore, any personnel complaints against a city employee, aside from the city manager, city secretary, city attorney, or municipal judge cannot be discussed under this section. Please contact the city manager's office for concerns involving a city employee. Phil Radeso.
You know the Durell Wright, Phil?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff. I just wanted to recognize an individual in our city that is, just goes to say the kind of people we have in our city. Dave Yelovich, one of my neighbors, was just appointed to the State Board of Plumbing Examiners by the governor. And he's an asset. In the past couple of weeks, he has helped so many of the neighbors with plumbing issues and questions and not knowing what to do, not knowing how to figure something out. And, you know, they, social media, phone call, knock on his door, and he was there to help them. Just wanted to say, we've got an asset, and our citizens have some money to use. Thanks.
Thanks, Phil. David Allen.
Yes, David Allen, 214 Inwood, Friendswood. A month ago, on February 1st, we talked about sort of a Trump nemesis, former CIA, John Brennan, saying that he was going to mobilize the DoD, intel agencies, and law enforcement to root out nativists, religious extremists, and libertarians. And apparently, they found their man. It's the General Honoray, Ornery, Honoray? Anyway, honor with an E on the end and an accent. And he was in charge of the gun confiscation that happened during Katrina. Some of you may remember that. There were lawsuits about it and everything. They actually had US, I think some were active duty army, but definitely they had the National Guard. And they didn't go to the soggy parts of the city. They went to the high and dry people with, you know, generators and robbed them, you know? And you can probably still see it on YouTube. The army guy says, yeah, our guns were bigger than theirs, and so we took theirs. Anyway, the guy that did that is apparently the man. So, but we, you know, as you know, it's a general assault of the country. We have, you know, the races against the races with the riots in the street, Antifa funded by George Soros. We have the men against the women. We have, I don't know what's happening. They're confusing our children where they don't know what sex they are in school and, you know, trying to force them into operations before the age of majority, before they're 18. Just kind of, you know, blasting at society in a bunch of crazy ways. And, but, but we've got, you know, we've got Red Chinese paying off both sides of the aisle up in Washington, a lot of the universities. In fact, unrestricted warfare, if you look that up, Chinese unrestricted warfare. They did some studies on that. In other words, send in the fentanyl. Send, you know, send money to all these people, it'll disrupt. And that's, if you can take down a country without actually sending in troops, in the beginning at least, do it. And they're apparently doing it. So it's not, it's not very good. But in the meantime, the point is, the next thing they're going to try is this civil war. And, you know, maybe by trying to go after the guns, but they've got to have a false flag. The, look up Parton, P-A-R-T-I-N, thank you. General Ben Parton, Air Force Weapons Lab. And his specialty was designing non-nuclear ways of destroying hardened concrete targets. And he went and saw the Mera building after it was taken down. If you just put in Parton, P-A-R-T-I-N, space, OKC, and you'll see his study that absolutely was an inside job, absolutely did not happen from that truck thing that was also there. So they're going to use something like that as an excuse to go after people. And the funny thing was, at that time, they blamed it on Rush Limbaugh, if you were listening to the talk shows at the time, and his people. Of course, he's dead now, so they can't do that. But they'll blame it on somebody. But the point is, in the meantime, just stay calm and throw the false flags. They're funded from outside sources, and we are an American family. So God bless.
Thanks, Mr. Allen. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief update on Hurricane Harvey and our recovery. Our hazard mitigation grant program acquisitions and our flood mitigation acquisition program. There are three properties remaining on our list that we haven't finalized negotiations on. We've given those property owners 30 days to make a decision whether they want to participate or not. This includes structures that flooded multiple times, that qualified for federal buyout. And the city obviously is the point of contact on that process. With regard to CDBGDR disaster recovery, Harris County side, the Forrest Bend Detention Project is still under engineering and environmental activities currently. Hill already gave a brief update on the Black Hawk Facility Emergency Shelter, so I won't touch base on that. Similarly, the utility line relocation project is under Environmental and Engineering Services at this time. That's the lines that go over Clear Creek at Polly Ranch near our regional wastewater treatment plant. With regards to the acquisition of properties through the same disaster recovery program, Frenchman's Creek and the Deepwood Properties, I mentioned to council last month that we've terminated the contractor associated with that project. You may recall, we went out for RFPs twice for project management services associated with it. We only got one respondent. That one respondent proved ineffective in their efforts. So we terminated their contracts, and we're doing those activities in-house. We should be nearing the appraisal portion of the acquisition efforts, and hopefully, we can get that moving along shortly. We're still waiting on a response to our mitigation application submitted last October. As a reminder, that's the $79 million project that would include terracing at the Whitkin property as well as properties along Clear Creek at Bay Area Boulevard and the combination of detention ponds, the combining of detention ponds on the opposite side of Bay Area Boulevard. On a positive note, not that anything else was not positive earlier, we recently received the results of our audit on the community rating system. Back in 2017, we had gone down in classification, not in a good way. Here recently, we were notified that we went up to a Class 6. So this was result in 20% savings and premiums, flood insurance premiums for our residents that are in the special flood hazard area. With regard to COVID, we continue to operate with minimal impact to staffing and facilities. Obviously, we do have concerns with the spread of the COVID virus. However, we've instituted proper PP and ease, use of PP and ease and separation at all of our city facilities to better protect the public as well as staff. We are working with Galveston County on vaccinations. So Galveston County has set up a vaccination hub at Walter Hall Park. And we're offering assistance where needed to that effort so that we can get more folks vaccinated as soon as possible. We haven't had any shutdowns of businesses associated with the COVID executive orders issued by Governor Abbott, nor have any citations been issued. Friendswood was recently named one of the safest cities. Obviously, y'all are not surprised. Last month, you got an update from Chief Wieners on our annual crime report. We were recently recognized by alarms.org. And there's a multitude of these agencies out there that tout the safest city data. Our crime rate is the lowest it's ever been, as shown on the graphic at the very bottom of that page. This recognition by alarms.org was based off of 2018 data, so it's only going to get better. I say announced today on this latest one, it was announced in January, but I was just made aware of it today. Neighborhood Scout, another online organization, ranked the top 100 cities in the country. Friendswood was ranked number 48th out of the entire country. That's moving up 42 spaces from number 90 last year. So once again, I appreciate the efforts of our police department. They are second to none. That is, that ranking also had us the top safest city in the Houston metro area from Neighborhood Scouts. Winter Storm 2021, our Yuri, as it's called. Obviously, this was a shock to a number of us in the area. A number of residents, a good half of Friendswood was without power for in excess of two to three days. We had a disruption in water service. Even backup generators that we had in place and ready to go to make sure that our critical infrastructure operated unfortunately had a disruption in natural gas service. So they failed. We had to get backups to our backup generators. However, I will say that city staff responded splendidly, as did the volunteer fire department and a number of other agencies. They met the challenge head on and quickly got sand on our bridges and roadways that had ice over them. We had folks delivering water. You see in the pictures on the screen, police department. And I believe that's the mayor behind the mask, but he was going incognito, delivering water to our old folks' homes throughout the community.
Do I really have that much gray hair?
It could be. I think it's one of the residents from the senior living facility stealing water, but it could be.
If that is me, I'm delivering water, I'm not taking water.
Got it, got it. We had to get backup generators, not only to our critical facilities, but as well to our senior living facilities. And I know a comment was made earlier this evening in passing. Councilmember Scott, you've been working with our state representatives on some legislation to provide better resources to our senior living communities.
Yeah, the other thing I would say, well, they're going to address it. So that issue should be done. But these are privately for-profit funded companies. So I think that as someone responsible for the government dollars, we need to go back to those facilities and get refunded for the expenditures that we put in to power them during the outage. They're not responsible for that, any cost that we incurred. I mean, it's admirable what we did. So I don't think for one second I'm taking anything away from that. But they are a for-profit organization. We should go get our money back.
So we will communicate with those agencies. The expenses that we incur during this events are reimbursable through the state of Texas.
It should be reimbursable through the privately held for-profit company that benefited from it.
I understand.
Not through the state.
And I understand that. And we will reach out to them in hopes of getting some reimbursement. But we're still going to submit for reimbursement from the state. So if those for-profits don't make us whole, I don't want the citizens to be left holding the bag when there's eligible dollars there. So I agree completely with what you're saying.
Anything that comes from the state came from the taxpayers.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
So it should come from those businesses that were ill-equipped to deal with what we saw. And we should be able to go and recuperate those dollars from those businesses.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I did have the last bullet on this slide, the boil water notice. So Friendswood receives 99% of its water from the City of Houston Southeast Water Purification Plant on a normal day. Obviously, there was a disruption in service back, not this past week, but during the week of the freeze. We never lost pressure, nor were our flooring residuals low enough to where we had to issue our own boil water notice. However, since our water came from Houston and was impacted, we went ahead and issued a boil water notice that was lifted a week ago this past Sunday. On the screen, and it's probably too small for you to read, were some of the statistics associated with the storm, both from a communication standpoint and a response standpoint from our volunteer fire department as well. There have been a total of 311 residential properties that were damaged. Either had broken water pipes or some other damage to their facility resulting from the storm. 24 commercial properties and seven public facilities. I do want to thank staff. They responded very well to this incident, as they always do. Always moving faster than what you can possibly imagine. But if it weren't for them, these numbers would be a lot worse. With that available to answer any questions y'all may have.
Thanks, Murad. Communications from committees and special reports, annual report.
One other question. I'm sorry, Mo, I did have one question. The Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee meeting last met, the Harris County Flood Control District, it had a really good PowerPoint presentation, but they renamed a detention basin. It's called the Friendswood Detention Basin. And during that meeting, they indicated that they were trying to get that put into the federal project. We should have known, or we should have known by now whether that has been placed into the federal project or not. That's the $295 million project. Is the Friends, do we know if the Friendswood, the new Friendswood Detention Basin is in that project? I don't know if Samantha knows or.
If it is, it's in name only. And Samantha will give an update to the drainage at the next council meeting, our quarterly update. But in short, until the modeling is complete for that detention basin, whether it's providing mitigation upstream as well as providing benefit to Friendswood without the federal project, we won't know until the modeling is complete. And that will be the determining factor, if it's in the federal project or not.
Does someone need to be at DD4 meetings, Brazoria County DD4 meetings, to be listening in on what is going on on the Pearland side? I know they have representatives at our Clear Creek Watershed Steering Committee. We have League City setting in at our Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. Should someone from the city be listening in on the Brazoria County side too, just to see what they're doing upstream?
It wouldn't hurt, and we'll gladly send staff.
Send me, send me their meeting dates and how I can get on their list. And I'll zoom in or whatever, just to see what they're saying up there too.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Item 10, communications from committees and special reports, annual report from Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, Joe Matranga. Thanks for being here, Joe. I see you brought a couple of your commissioners there. I see Richard Sassen, Travis Mann. Thank you, guys.
Brought backup.
Good plan.
Right. Say that again? I, we'll see. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. I really appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight and to review the Planning and Zoning Commission's 2020 accomplishments and 2021 priorities. 2020, as we all know, the world knows, was a very challenging year. And even the commission wasn't immune to COVID and had some impacts to our efficiencies. They were able to meet and that sort of thing, same thing that impacted some of you guys from time to time. We had that come up in 2020, and we had one other event that we really didn't foresee coming. And that was a lot of the time and effort that we went into reviewing and analyzing and working with city council on building height in the downtown district. So between those two, that was an impact, some of the impacts we didn't see coming. But even with those, I think we got a lot accomplished. And I think it was a successful year for the Planning and Zoning Commission. With that, before we're getting into the details of those accomplishments, I really would like to, at least at the very beginning, say, obviously, when I talk about the commission, it's really talking about all the people that support the commission. For, without them, we wouldn't get anything done, let's just be honest. Through the city staff, Aubrey Harbin, Becky Bennett, Mary Kay Fisher, and all the people that support them. Without them, we couldn't have got half of, we didn't get very much at all of what I'm going to talk about accomplished. So obviously, when I say the commission, I mean them very much so. So going through, my first slide is up. I would like to at least. So, going through, my first slide is up, I would like to at least mention the commissioners that were active in 2020, starting with Brett Banfield, and he stepped down late last year in 2020 and was replaced by Travis Mann, as you mentioned, Mike is here tonight, Richard Clark, Eric Gunther, whose term expired in 2020, and he was replaced by Tom Hinkley, Lisa Lundquist, myself, then Marcus Perry, and Richard Sassen, our vice chair. I also have to mention all the support and help that we get from our city council liaisons and trying to keep us out of trouble as much as possible, Robert Grifon and Trish Hanks. So thank you all very much for all the help that you provide us. One of the major things that the Planning and Zoning Commission is responsible for is approving Platts. And Platts are those drawings that lay out the boundaries of property, the meets and bounds, the easements that are on those properties, and that's done for commercial projects and residential. I have a plat up on the screen right now of a new subdivision that's coming in, the Avalon subdivision, that many, everybody I think has heard about coming. So that's up there, but so that lays out the lot widths, you know, what the size of those lots are, what the easements are, as I said. So that's one of the key things that Planning and Zoning does. And in 2020, we had an increase in those Platts. Our preliminary Platts increased in 2020 and extensions from a total of 10 from eight last year, slight increase. Final Platts increased from eight in 2019 to 11 in 2020. So for commercial property, after the Platts are approved, the very next, one of the very next steps is the approval and the review and the approval of their site plans. That lays out the elevations of the building, how they sit on the property and that sort of thing. And the site plan that I included on the presentation tonight is Ranch Express out on 518 towards, going towards League City, that you see that being built on the right as you're heading to League City. So on site plans, we actually had a significant decrease in 2020 from prior year, 2019. We had three versus 10 come across through Planning and Zoning, and on site plan amendments, we also had a decrease. We had one versus four the prior year. And again, I want to be clear, I don't think that's because we didn't get to those things, I just think we saw a downturn, COVID or other, just normal business cycle, we just saw less coming through. So we addressed everything that came in on time. One of the other things that the commission gets involved with and is responsible for is looking at our zoning regulations and our ordinances and making recommendations to city council. And so in 2020, we had a decrease, we had five in 2020 come up for zoning changes, zoning recommendations to city council versus 10 the year before, and then ordinance changes, we had a decrease from 12 the year before to four in 2020. And just for sake of time, I'm not going through obviously the details, but you have the details and all the backup material that you have. In addition to those Platts, site plans, zoning and ordinance changes, we did a lot of other things as well. I think as many as you know, we meet quite often, we have two formal meetings a month. So we met 17 times last year. We had one retreat, we had one workshop with city council, and numerous, numerous subcommittee meetings. So we made recommendations regarding the building height changes that I mentioned before, permitted use tables, we looked at that again, we tend to do that about annually. We made recommendations regarding the zoning board of adjustments authority to make that consistent with state law that passed through Planning and Zoning as well. Made recommendations to change the commission's meeting dates, that has proven, in my opinion, to be very effective, where at times we would be meeting on the same nights, we split apart and meet on different nights now, and I think that's been a good change, with I think very minimal, if any, impacts on development in the city. Let's see, we also conducted the annual review of the NAICCS codes, that gets in use for permitted uses in different zonings, what's allowed, what use is allowed here, what's allowed in commercial zones. We kicked off the comprehensive update, which I think that council, you're very aware of, and that's continuing into 2021. We worked to match the Friendswood ordinances to the legislative changes that occurred last year. That came, I think, to the surprise of a lot of people, and we're still working through those, but we, again, tried to make sure our ordinances matched those as soon as possible, and updating of the official zoning map. So I mentioned at the very beginning, the one retreat that we have in December, we typically will meet in a retreat with just the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's obviously an open meeting, but in that meeting, we talked a few minutes about what we did in 2020, but we spent a lot of time talking about what are we going to do the next year? And so, in that particular meeting that we had in December of last year, we came up with at least, these are not all, but these are just kind of the key ones that we're working on and we've identified, at least our initial 2020 projects. Continue working with city council to update the comprehensive plan, that's ongoing, a lot of work being done. We've already started meeting on the future land use map, that's been in subcommittee meetings, and we came to the full commission just this month, or excuse me, February last month. So you'll see more about that coming up, where we'll be working with city council, we'll be working with other departments within the city and the public, to make sure we're getting a lot of good input into that future land use map. We're continuing to look at updating our zoning ordinances as we do every year. This year, we've kind of identified tree ordinance, that's ongoing, we're working on that already, and be making recommendations to city council on that. Plan unit development requirements, some tweaking there, Garden Home District, again, some tweaking there that we want to make recommendations to council. And then going to reviewing our subdivision ordinance, being consistent with state law, we're always looking at that to make sure of that consistency. Park dedication requirements, we have some things we want to talk to you guys about. And then, I put this on here just to highlight, work to enhance workshops with city council, and I don't want anybody to think that I think we don't work well together. I think we do, I think we have good meetings together, but when we have our retreats where we can really talk freely, openly, and kick around ideas, you know, some go well, some we change our mind on things, we thought, how can we bring city council into a meeting like that, where we can have a much freer, open exchange of ideas? And maybe it's possible with Open Meetings Act, maybe it's not, but it's something that we're at least wanting to see, is there a way we can have, you know, just even better dialogue? We think we have a good relationship, we have a lot of communication that goes on. Believe me, when things don't go well, I could get calls from time to time from some of you. But with that, that is my prepared remarks for tonight, and I'm open to any questions.
Thanks, Joe. And on that last bullet, I'm way in favor of that, so let's plan on doing a joint retreat sometime where we can kick around ideas and shout at each other or something.
And just make sure it's alignment, the last thing we ever want to do is head off in a way that city council doesn't desire us to head. We're always making sure that we're aligned.
Right.
Joe, I just want to thank you and all the commissioners for your report. I just don't think the people in Friendswood realize the volume and material that you guys go through, it's absolutely overwhelming. When I go through your packets, I'm like, wow, these guys and y'all's dedication to the work, and it's a labor of love. I can see it in each of your faces when you're going over it, y'all work through it, just amazing, amazing job that y'all do, and the material that y'all go through, it's just, you can see it's a dedication of love, and I really appreciate it on the part of the citizens of Friendswood and as a council member.
Well, thank you very much, thank you. No further questions, thank you very much.
Item 11, discussion of possible action. Discussion of possible action regarding approving an interlocal agreement between Harris County and the City of Friendswood to receive a donation of non-capital assets. Motion in a second. Murad, you want to go with Sam?
Just a brief update, this is an agreement, obviously, between the City of Friendswood and Harris County on equipment that the city's already secured, that's with the volunteer fire department. This is to formalize a process that's been in place for a number of years now.
It's really more just a cleanup measure, so it's material we've had three or four years now, or maybe even longer. It's past its grant date, so it doesn't have to go back, it doesn't have to be accounted for, so basically, it's just a way for them to get off the books. We actually possess it, own it now, and it's accountability for the fire department.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Item 12, resolution, consideration, and possible action regarding the following resolution number R 2021-07, a resolution of the City Council of Friendswood, Texas in support of greater Harris County 911 legislation. Got a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Motion in a second.
Just as a matter of information, Greater Harris County 911 provides the 911 services to this entire region to ensure the emergency calls are routed to the appropriate location. The City of Friendswood doesn't receive any monetary benefit from this organization, nor do we fund this organization. We have their equipment within our building and on our tower to ensure that emergency calls are routed to the appropriate place. This agency hasn't had increased funds in well over a decade, and so they've asked the state legislature to sponsor a bill to increase their funding that's paid for by telephone bills. Obviously, 911 service, the service of 911 is critical to emergency operations, and therefore, staff is recommending that we support the legislation. Ultimately, that's y'all's decision.
Okay. Any questions, further discussion, all in favor? Ordinances, consideration, possible action regarding the following. Ordinance number T 2021-04, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7.p.6 permitted use table to allow less dense residential uses in higher-dense residential districts by defining residential uses in the table and amending section 7b, R2 and R3, multifamily residential low, residential general purpose and description, section 7.c. R4, multifamily residential medium, residential general purpose and description, and section 7.d. R5, multifamily residential high, residential general purpose and description to require the less dense residential use located in higher-dense residential districts to meet the district regulations of the less dense district.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Please don't make me read this one more time. Ordinance number T 2021-05, second and final reading of an ordinance amending Appendix C zoning ordinance, section 7.q.2 residential regulations matrix to amend, subnote F, to allow lots in existence that are zoned single-family residential and are less than 90 feet wide to continue with the setbacks that were established when the lot was platted or created.
Motion for a second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Ordinance number T 2021-08, first and final reading of an ordinance of the City of Friendswood, Texas declaring the unopposed candidates for mayor, Mike Foreman, city council position one, Steve Rocky, and city council position three, Trish Hanks, elected, canceling the May 1st, 2021 general election for such positions.
With complete and utter surprise, and I don't have to run again, I'd like to make this motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Is there any discussion?
Ordinance number T 2021-09, first and final reading of an ordinance amending City of Friendswood, Texas. Ordinance number T 2020-35, passed and approved September 14th, 2020, same being an ordinance approving and adopting the city's general budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 by approving Budget Amendment 5 to the original general budget of the City of Friendswood, Texas for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Moving right along. Ordinance number E 2021-10, first and final reading of an ordinance providing for the suspension or modification of certain ordinances and regulations as an emergency measure in response to a state of disaster due to Winter Storm 2021, requiring registration and licensing of providers of building and repair services per chapter 14 buildings and building regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Since this is an emergency ordinance, it only has to be acted on one time, but we did some similar activities following Hurricane Harvey. Obviously, when folks have been damaged by the storm, we don't want to put them through any additional rigmarole. However, we do want to ensure that the contractors are properly licensed and insured so that they don't take advantage of our residents. So we will waive permit fees and inspections on residential structures, on commercial structures with fire sprinkler systems. Obviously, we want to test them to make sure that they're operational, but we're going to waive fees associated with it.
Thank you. Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, item 14, communications from the mayor and council members. Steve, you want to go first?
I just wanted to tell everybody, I'm feeling much better. Since I spoke to you last month, I had another brief period of time in the hospital with a secondary infection, but I've been home more than a week. I can walk a quarter mile now, I'm getting along pretty good, I've been working, so I just wanted to thank everybody who's expressed concern, and I'm just planning it day by day.
Councilmember Branson?
Well, I'd like to thank our city for stepping up during our cold snap, I'll lighten that mood a little. I really appreciate what y'all did, and I know that especially the senior facilities, they really appreciate what you did, and their family members did as well. I would like to congratulate Trish and Mike, and I guess Steve too, on y'all's reelection. And then I would also like to congratulate Melinda on her upcoming retirement, and enjoy this next chapter of your life, Melinda. We're going to miss you, but you've done a fantastic job, we'll miss you, don't be a stranger, please come back, but enjoy your time away.
Councilmember Hanks?
I was really going to just echo everything that Councilwoman Branson just said. Thanks to the community for giving us another opportunity to serve another three years in the faith that you are demonstrating. And to our staff, you did a yeoman's job with this storm, and it just seems like it's one thing after another. We're getting used to emergencies, I know, but it would be nice to go back to some semblance of normalcy. And Melinda, congratulations again, thank you for everything you've done to make the city run smoothly, council run smoothly, the support you give to each one of us, and we wish you the best.
Councilmember Grifon?
I'd like to congratulate Steve Rocky and Trish and Honorable Mayor Mike, congratulations on your three-year term coming up, it's awesome, and it's always the best way to run is unopposed. It doesn't happen that often, but when it does, it sure makes it easier. But other than that, Melinda, I have really enjoyed working with you, it's been awesome. Thanks for holding my hand through several situations and helping my wife and her duties as treasurer during my last campaign that I had to run, so thank you for that help. Only other thing that I can say in regards to the flooding, I mean, the Arctic freeze that we had, is I believe that the criticism that our governors had and the Utility Commission of Texas and the legislatures have gotten in social media, email, on the radio, I just believe that it's warranted. I just think that they weren't prepared, ERCOT was not prepared. I don't believe that you should be running around trying to get participation trophies for 25% air and solar and wind and solar, when all of our grids and everything needs new transformers, new upgrading for freezing, it's real disappointing for me, just as a citizen of Friendswood, and this is only my opinion, but we should have never been subjected to the unpreparedness that we experienced through ERCOT and our legislation and especially our governor. That's the kind of way I feel about it, and that's how I'm going to leave it.
Councilmember Scott?
Just like to echo everybody else, I think I've been with you longer than anybody else up here, so thank you very much for your service to our community. The city is better having had you serve, and I wish you nothing but the best in retirement.
Councilmember?
A lot of the same things, congratulations to Mayor Steve and Trish on your next three years. Melinda, congratulations on retirement. Thank you to the police for continuing to make these lists and keep moving our city up on being safe. The Parks and Recreation did the daddy-daughter movie in the park this week. The Parks and Recreation did the daddy-daughter movie in the park this weekend. My kids seem to be getting a little old to go to these. It's kind of sad missing those, but if y'all haven't gone to any of these, they're pretty neat events for the kids. And they did a really, from what I heard, all the reviews, it was a real neat event for the kids. Lastly, you know, I'm in the logistics business, and that last week was probably one of the toughest weeks I think I've ever dealt with. With floods, they're pretty isolated. With hurricanes, they're isolated. This thing was so widespread, and we saw a lot of things we didn't know. And the city navigated once again, kept our roads safe, and everything around here flowing. We're kind of back normal in a couple of days. And like Trish said, we just keep finding ways to get through this thing and excel. And I just want to tell everybody, good job.
I want to apologize earlier when I talked about the freeze. I didn't mention Brent donating water and stuff to our community, so thank you for that, Brent.
Oh, no problem. That actually came from the Astros. I just ran the truck over here.
Well, we appreciate you stealing from the Astros.
They got to, you know what, not like they've never stole anything before, right?
Good one. Good job, Brent. Well, Melinda, you had your last council meeting. Did you want to say anything? Put you on the spot.
Just thank you again for the opportunity to be the city secretary. You know, like you said in my little private proclamation that you gave me, that I've done everything in that office. But definitely, being city secretary, I got a little closer to the council, and it's just been a very rewarding experience, and I wouldn't trade it for anything. But I'm ready to have a life again, so I'm looking forward to that.
Great.
Thank you, but thank you for the opportunity. Well, of course, I know most of y'all weren't on council at the time whenever I became city secretary, but thank you for continuing. And y'all have been wonderful to work with, and I appreciate it. And I value my years as a city secretary.
Thank you for training me first as a council member and now as a mayor. And I couldn't have done this all without your help, so we definitely appreciate you. And that wasn't a private proclamation. Everybody in Friendswood should know that today is Melinda Welsh Day in the City of Friendswood. And Chief, I hope I wasn't overstepping. I told her since it was her day, she could drive as fast as she wanted. But only for four more hours. So...
He's just looking at you. He's not smiling.
No comments.
They got a private room in the jail for friends of mine. I know that. Okay, item 15, consent agenda. Motion in a second. All in favor? All right, closed executive session, communication from the public regarding executive session topics. Any cards for that, Melinda?
No, sir.
Council may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant to Section 551.074 Personnel Matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee with possible discussion and action related thereto an open session. Appointment of the city secretary. Reconvene into open session. Item 18, consideration and possible action regarding the appointment of the city secretary. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the city manager to negotiate an offer with the top candidate.
All in favor? Adjourned.